Well, good, oh, I guess this afternoon, yeah. Good afternoon, sorry for the delay. Uh, thank you for coming to the special call meeting of the City of South Fulton on the budget. Uh, Mr. Clerk, if you would call in and work, please.
Mayor William Bill Edward.
Here.
Mayor Prosser Mark Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Catherine Ralph.
Present.
Councilmember Carmelita Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly C. Willis. Councilmember Nigel Gilley.
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Here.
And Councilmember Cleve.
Present.
Mr. Mayor Yobekor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. For all the first act of the day.
First item is a request for adoption of a resolution for the City of South Fulton's fiscal year 2019 final budget and several items of revenue anticipation appropriating the amounts showing in each fund as expenditures, prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available, and for unlawful purposes. This is Resolution 2018-053. For note, the CFO has distributed a new version of that document today, so that's not posted in front of you, and the number on the printed item says 058, but it is 053. Maybe as a presentation.
Okay, I'm the mayor and the city council.
Good afternoon.
We are here to present the final request for adoption of the budget for 2019 fiscal year, and at this time I'll ask the budget manager to walk us through some changes that have taken place since the last time the publication was sent out on Friday. Then at the end, I'll also end up requesting you adopt the budget, budget manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure for me to present to you this final proposal of 2019 budget, and I'll just add a few of the changes that we made subsequent to the final publication date on the 13th. So our proposed budget has a total proposed revenue of $98,443,386, and our proposed expenditure of $97,571,895, which give us a small reserve of $871,491. So since our submission on the 13th, we made a few small changes, which were basically to increase the health costs and operating of the legislature. We corrected an error in travel allowance measures and reduced our utility cost in the general services department. So the budget by fund for revenues, the general fund, is $71,174,426,000. Uh, the next funded account is the restricted grant fund. All Americans and E911 will be funded to the general fund, because the revenue is coming to those accounts. Our restricted grant fund, that is the remaining of grants that we anticipate receiving, the savings grant for high payers, and then Alhoka Hotel, which we anticipate at $180,000. Feast class, that's the funding for 2019, and some ways are estimated of $9 million, giving us total revenues of $98,443,386,000. Expenditures, general fund, $52,745,437,000. All American fund, coming out of the general fund, is $50,000. E911, $1.7 million. Restricted grant fund, same as revenue, $196,620,000. Feast class, $17,993,300. Package of products, $3,699,580. Solid waste, $59 million, and debt service, $12,326,000. Total expenditure of $97,571,895,000. So based on our budget, we will have, we would remain at a negative fund balance, our fund balance at the end of 2017, are now we're here with $6.3 million in negative. We anticipate having a small surplus at the end of 2018, about $78,126,000. We're projecting a surplus at the end of 2019, the budget is the value that's presented today, of $871,491,000, which would make my situation just a little better, but we're looking for a negative fund balance of $53 million, probably can't get out of that. This is just a projection, showing that once our loans paid off in 2019 or 2020, we anticipate we'll start having positive revenue, starting work on making positive fund balance. At the end of my presentation, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Excellent.
What percent is the fund balance?
Pardon?
What percent?
Is the fund balance, is that a 1% on the public budget?
Uh, I thought the goal was to have at least a 1% fund balance, Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and, uh, they'll just keep us on line for a, for a positive fund balance in the next two or three years.
Yes, sir, I 100% agree with you. I think this budget, while it does not get us on the positive fund balance or the stated goals that council has made, with our position being debt funded at the beginning of our term, I think this is a very aggressive budget that starts us on that trend to get out in year four and be clear of debt, so I'm excited about where we're going.
Is there any one thing that, Catherine, from going under $1 million now, is there anything, one thing that sticks out that keeps us from going under?
Well, so, yeah, I think the biggest part is that we have to invest, we have to make capital investments in our facilities now, and we cannot wait. Uh, I'll tell you, just today, we received notice that we, we're doing the assessment that we told council about, uh, for some of our facilities, and it actually came back that some of these buildings have had longstanding existing issues that we are pretty concerned about. I think we plan to actually move, uh, some of our staff temporarily into another facility, based on the information we got back today. So the investments that we've made here is, I think council knows, we had a very small investment, capital investment for year one, we've actually basically tripled it, so that we can try to rectify some of these problems. We may also need to come back to council, uh, based on this assessment, although we have the money, uh, to be able to approve the, to, for these facility repairs, my ability to sign off on these emergency contracts, the threshold is higher than the 25,000, so we may have to find, not we may, we will have to find a way to bring this back before you, because it's an emergency situation. But that's the one area where we have an issue.
The information will be assessed, uh, you want to share that information with council?
We are, I haven't even seen it yet. It's not in my inbox, you know, they, they call you and tell you what you're about to receive first, but when we do, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, does this budget include, uh, the necessary budget needed for the barricades?
Yes, and so in our, uh, public works, while we have not, uh, fully defined, um, that budget yet, as you know, because we're bringing the service model to you, there's a carve-out for about $6,000 for barricades.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
What? Please.
I ask that there is more discussion.
We just, we get one.
She gets one.
Everything else is the same.
We met, we, um, we had a meeting yesterday. We left the meeting, we had a meeting yesterday, we left the meeting, we said that I know when I left, I didn't, because we had to leave so abruptly, so the next group could come in, I said that I would send in my comments, which I did very late last night, or early this morning, and so there hasn't been any discussion about that at all.
Okay. So you can tell us how you would like to proceed on it. I think, so we have, we received your questions, and I think some of those, you alluded to in your response, and we had answered some of them, and you had some follow-ups. I, I would say that not only your questions, I think there are a couple of council members who sent us inquiries or had additional calls today. I think we have addressed all of them, um, within this budget. Um, I believe all of the questions are satisfied. I think there are some clarifications that you asked for that, I mean, I guess we could go through them line by line now, but I would say the questions or the concerns that you had raised, where different dollars go, et cetera, et cetera, I think we've addressed all of those in the budget. And so if you guys give us guidance on how you would like to discuss them, or how you would like to go through those inquiries, I guess we could do it here, but we would need insights from you.
Um, this is Ms. Jackson.
Yes, Ms. Jackson.
Um, is the health coverage for council and?
Yes, ma'am. Those were the adjustments that she went over. Could you go back to those slides?
Yeah, 'cause the reason she's asking, 'cause it says over here, mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's the legislature health coverage increase, page 12 to 18.
So this is a noting, I think it's a problem.
No, it is, it just did not reflect mayor, the council.
Yeah, it wasn't on mayor.
Yes, apologies. I'm, I'm gonna go through it, though, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So we say legislature health coverage increase, that's all. Uh, the legislature operating budget increased as discussed and agreed upon, mayor health coverage, uh, oh, I see it, 'cause it's double. Got it, 'cause we just, 'cause they, we did legislature ver, got it. I, I see what a clarity needed to be, so we're all on the same page with that now. Um, and then the travel allowance, I think we noticed that it was, uh, it was a typo there, but everyone's is at the same amount, and then what we did was make a slight adjustment to the general utility costs have been decreased, but yes, those, those have been addressed. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jackson.
Well, I'm, um, I think that I could accept not getting an answer to my many questions, 'cause I still don't have them. If I can get a response about, you know that I'm concerned about over $2 million in contracts and so forth, so that is a big concern for me. It continues to be, and then one of the things that you did say was that we would have the option, uh, we would hear two scenarios for public works.
Yes, ma'am.
One would be the contracted one, and one would be the, um, a contractual one.
A hire.
And so before we start talking about a motion or all of that, we gotta put on that too, right?
No, no, I don't think you have to. So the amount that is budgeted for public works is finite. We don't have more or less adjusted for public work, and whether it is based on the most expensive model, which is the full personnel model. And so what you know in that model is that we don't have enough money to actually be able to purchase the level of equipment needed. Um, there's some concerns about the building, et cetera, et cetera. If we went with the contract model, we believe that that is at a much lower cost. So since it would be at a lower cost, you don't have to, you can approve this budget because the money earmarked will cover either way. Does that make sense?
And, and for your?
Yes, ma'am.
Contracting, the people's account?
What are you, no, 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 no. That's not, that would, I'd just say no.
Okay.
Yeah, and so your question about the $2 million in contractual services, I'd like to highlight that almost 750,000, maybe 800,000 of that are for existing contracts that we already have, so it's not new contracts. You know, I don't like to call out contractors, but the existing one that we have in, just off the top of my head, in building permits is about 600,000. So that tells you alone, a big chunk is for existing contracts that would roll over into this new year. Se, how much is it?
400,000 for the court.
For the, oh, and, and so 400, 400,000, uh, in addition for code, for, uh?
She said court.
For when, uh?
Municipal court.
Municipal court, got it. And so that's the, what, what we just called out, about million, million, two.
I don't have that in my to-do list. I don't have a court in my to-do list.
So I don't know which 2 million you're addressing. I, I just wanna highlight that the bulk of the, I guess my point in this is that the bulk of the contractual services that are in the budget are existing contracts that would continue into the new year, so they're not new. Another item that, another perspective that I would also like to add is, is that every, I'll just make it plain for you, I don't like to contract out services. And so when there's a recommendation for contractual services, it is because the cost related to those services exceed what we believe is reasonable for our budget, where we are as a community. And so as such, we're trying to get the same level of services at a lower price. One area that I can highlight right away is that out of the contractual services that are in the budget in the city manager's office is related to the 311 call centers, about $100,000. For us to be able to bring on eight call center representatives, just the call center representatives, it is, and we pay them directly, it would be about 160,000. For the 100,000, we would not only be able to get the contracted services, we would also be able to get those things that we don't always think about, those ancillary activities, like somebody coming up with the call center, uh, protocol, the training that has to happen, the connection from the website to the actual, uh, via VOP system that we have, the voice system. So that allows us to get what would cost us over 200,000, because you're just talking about the people that want 60 for 100,000 in this fiscal year, and so those are where the contractual services come into play.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The contractual services, just contracted services.
Yes, ma'am.
On my spreadsheet, it says 16 departments.
Mm-hmm.
And those 16 departments total 2.2 million.
Okay.
That is what I'm referring to, and some of it might be, you know, really simple kind of stuff, and when I say simple, we need to go out and get whatever services I'm going to call there. The lowest one is 200,000, the highest one is 625, upwards 575 is, goes for the inspector, I know that, okay?
And so that also includes, I would say, for quite a bit of those departments, because I, I know we didn't, we went over them in a variety of different ways, but some of them, you've got your economic development master plan, um, you've got the city clerk, um, so you've got, uh, the election, uh, we, I mean, so we could, we could go through each one, but I, we have actually already gone through them, and I think some of them had notes in the budget book, but some of the others, I think we've checked off, remember, for the external affairs, um, for the, for us to use a firm to be able to provide lobbying if the council so chooses. So we went over that one, and it's just where it's placed, and so we've put them all in the different departments, but we've actually defined for council what each one of those are without putting them, so you don't have to search for them in the budget.
And then the last thing is, um, the youth activity that is under the city manager, and I think just about all of us have some youth activities that we want to engage in.
So that activity, and it's a very small amount, it is not a quote-unquote "youth activity," it's, um, the extension of the internship program that we discussed, I believe, within my first month. So it's the component we talked about for the South Fulton fellows, to be able to have a youth council and some of those other things, it also, the only reason we put it in my budget is because it's citywide, and so those youth, let's say, Ms. Walker was a youth who, she's in law, she wanted to go to the courts. The funding line comes from one place, but she would still be able to go to the courts because it's at that city level. If, uh, these youth, uh, let's say there's a youth mayor, then the youth mayor would of course shadow and lead the group, but he would basically probably shadow the mayor, and so that's why it's actually in that budget. And I don't remember the amount, but I, I know it's nominal for that, because, uh, most of the interns, we were hoping to do, uh, complimentary, but I think for the, to be able to run a youth, uh, government like that and to be able to start it up, there would be some nominal funding required.
And then, um, legal was cut around 50,000, and I didn't think it needed to be, because, um, we have someone who overly responds, and we have a lot of things coming up, and I don't know if that's an area where we should make a cut.
Well, but, so that was for the extent, there was no legal budget at first. There was half a million dollars, which is what I believe the agreement, uh, is to be able to provide those services for additional services, and I'll tell you, we haven't defined what those would be, so I know that through the, I'm assuming through the budget process, what you would normally do is, once you, um, pass the budget, we would develop a service level agreement with our legal team, and so at that point, not only will you know what you get for the 500,000, if that conflict attorney or whatever else you have to do for litigation, et cetera, you have a bucket of money that you can utilize at whatever rate you agree to.
I was just thinking that, because the original budget had 550, and it's now 500.
No, 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 that's, so I think you're right, the original budget had 550, but, no, no, she's talking about the very original one, had 550. We increased it, and I think now we're at where?
600,000.
Yeah, we're at 600,000, so we've got 100,000 more than what was budgeted in FY18. Yeah, there, there's $100,000 extra, because with, with our current situation, we have unique instances, let's say with College Park, other people that are re, that are, uh, uh, in our region and represented.
Litigation.
Yeah, so in litigation, we would be able to use either a third party, funnel it out to a secondary firm, or have conflict, but you have an additional $100,000 in there for that purpose, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me just say, I, I asked to entertain the motion, not to stop the debate, so I just wanted to get the motion on the floor, about what I'd like to, but go ahead. I think next to Ms. Gomes, Ms. Gomes, are you asking to?
Make the motion?
No, no. You wanna make the motion?
No, I was just listening to questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, uh, we answered my questions in the process.
Ms. Roth?
One of the things I ask under the salary line, under each of the districts, is that you indicate for the benefit of the public that that includes, uh, the city council and the legislative aid, that there's a lot of increase to the council's.
So I can think of apologizing about that. We were supposed to do that, we knew to do it for the final budget book, and it will be in there, but that is one area that council asked for, that is an issue that I think.
We did do it, but, um, one I didn't have is the, um, compi, that was submitted in on Friday, that's why you just highlighted the dollar changes, but I just.
Yeah, we haven't distributed the final.
We have made it in every line, so we're not distributed, because we didn't know if you would have changes today.
Yeah, it's not in the final, but it is, where it will reflect, do we, we, I don't know if we have an image of that, but I can tell you right off the top, I think the amount for the legislative, uh, aid is about 51, and for each council member is 13, so the way you will see it reflected is it will have the breakdown, I mean, it'll have the total, but in the actual column that supports it, it will break down which is which, because the council, uh, salaries do not change, they're not adjusted, they are the same, and theirs are virtually the same as well.
So did you make 41 for the?
I apologize.
It's 13.
I'm, I'm winging it off the top of my head on that one, but yeah. Total is 53, that's right, so, yes, apologies on that, yeah.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
I need a motion, I need, I'm gonna take a motion.
So, I mean, of course.
Go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
So, I'm lost again, because yesterday, well, I thought we were saying, you're saying this budget includes the legislative aids with us, that we're looking at?
Yes.
It's the salary line, yes, ma'am.
Well, I thought we asked that, that, that's supposed to be under the clerk's office.
No, ma'am, under the Uniform Charter of Accounting and Charter of Accounting rules, um, legislative works for you has to be costed within your districts, we can respect the actual cost of each district.
No, the charter states that we, we don't have, they, we're not supposed to have direct authority.
It's not, it's not only reporting, it is for the Uniform Charter of Account, which is the accounting rule, and what, how, where, how we, how they practically report is different than how it is visually shown in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where, I think that's where the, y'all, y'all having two different conversations, yes, it's just how is reflected in the budget is different than your practical reporting, it is how the costs are allocated, yes.
Wait a minute, hold on. So this is reflecting in everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so, one second, before we move on, 'cause I know.
Do you want to point it out?
Just in everybody's.
Say yes and no.
Just in everybody's.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Is, and that's, it is reflected in this?
Ms. Paines, I got a quick question for y'all.
That's good.
You have a question?
Ready, ready?
Oli trying to, um, work something out, trying to.
Yes, yes, it's, what? It is.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Many, that, these books are.
So highlight it for them, and just so that they know. And, Ms. Paines, Ms. Paines?
Is the resolution for full-time, um?
Option for full-time legislative specialists?
What do you mean?
Is it budgeted for a full-time or part-time?
Yes.
So it's budgeted at full-time, so one, let us, and we're gonna, we're just gonna answer it publicly, so that's one, and then the other one, I'm gonna have them address it, but.
Okay.
Got it, okay. All right, so really quickly, uh, Mr. Malady, am I correct that, um, one of the areas that we were looking at was the, the legislative aid status, and as we explore that, we budget it for them to be at the full-time, uh, rate, is that correct?
We basically, that is the same status, that makes me know.
Right, right. Okay, so that has not been accounted for, so the way that we would be able to address it is through an amendment after they pass the resolution?
And after that, you have been approved, that this is where you want to.
Okay. And the other area, we have already, I think, they have the incorrect, um, version, because it is an older version, but the actual healthcare for our elected body is actually now covered, and, um, the operational increase that is discussed is included, okay?
Ms. Jackson, I hand you down, I don't know if it is. Okay, uh, Ms. Gilley?
So, um, throughout this process, I do understand that there is a need for a tax administrator versus a finance director, is that what are we, a treasurer?
We do not have now the tax personnel, so I do almost everything, and the, as you know, that we are contracted with the city of Fulton County, we don't have in-house, so the, we need to have someone that can be responsive to residents on each and every bit of the needs of their taxpayers. So that's my recommendation, that's my request to have a tax administrator in the 2019, and as we grow down the line, then we may need to have an increase in supervisor levels.
Okay, um, do you have other questions?
Why, look at her. She, you, you, you're job loss.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Um, and you're reminding me that, well, I, and the budget is a finance director and a controller, we don't need both, so it would be my recommendation to delete the finance director and substitute it with a tax administrator. Since the finance director says that's what we need, I'm making a motion that, that's what we do. I make a motion that the finance director position is deleted and replaced with a tax administrator.
Second?
So properly moved to second, discussion, hearing done, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So if that's the case, then what we would have is, uh, city treasurer, or what would be the staffing at this point? I, I'm not clear, because is the salary is earmarked for the, the current CFO, 'cause that's.
city treasurer or what, what would be the staffing at this point? I, I'm not clear because is the salary is earmarked for the, the current CFO? Cause that's what you get.
Well, you got rid of the finance director.
That was a new position. CFO is still there.
Okay.
CFO is still there.
Okay.
It's the finance director position, which is a new position. That the money that the CFO said.
And you just said switch the name and earmark the money for the tax administrator, okay?
Is there a difference?
The proposed position is finance director slash tax administrator.
Okay, so that needed.
So within the two, the tax administrator to me is more important because we do not have, we have personnel in the finance controllers that can do the job of the.
And we have a controller. Excuse me, uh, Ms. Rawlins still has the floor, followed by Ms. Kalina.
So based off what um, Mr. Malazi is saying, basically, we don't need to make a change because the way the position is slated, it covers both responsibilities, finance and tax administration, is that correct?
Exactly.
Tax administrator.
Right, but you said that it covered both duties of that.
No, hire either tax administrator or finance director.
It's an either or.
Either or. The mind is not enough to have both of them.
And you feel that the tax administrator is more important?
That's correct.
Ms. Kalina?
Um, this, I'm sorry, this, this is your department, right? Finance is your department. You, you hire whichever one you want. That's, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
You hire whichever one you want. It's your department.
Okay, uh, I'll let you have a motion. I made a motion. In a second. On, on the two second.
Tax administrator.
Okay, let's vote. Did we vote?
We didn't vote.
Let's vote. That's unanimous.
The tax administrator.
Yes. Another motion.
I make a motion to accept the twenty.
She can do that.
We can go.
We still have a discussion, that's not debate.
I make a motion that uh we accept the twenty nineteen fiscal year final budget.
Uh, with amended changes. Uh, we need to add another amendment though.
But you can say.
Second.
Now, go ahead.
So the amendment to the um, the council salaries um to include the option of. I mean. We talked about this and we asked for that to be given as an option. So.
Are you talking about the second, you're saying what, they're gonna be full or part-time?
Yes.
Oh, we've been through this.
But it's not on.
It's not in our budget.
Did you not say? For the option.
He, he mentioned you said that we can do the amendments, so if you approve.
You don't have to do it now, so you don't have a resolution. Your resolution that you write is going to direct us, remember we?
Okay.
So when you do a resolution, it's going to say whether they are full-time or part-time. If the rate is gonna be the same, remember?
The rate is.
There was a discrepancy, but remember there was a discrepancy in the seventy-five and what constitutes it and how you wrote it the first time, you didn't feel as if we implemented it that way. Which means when you write it, it will, it will make us adjust appropriately.
Okay, okay, I got you. I'm good.
Second.
I'm sorry.
All right, second, uh, Ms. Kalina?
So, yeah, I think as a draft of that original uh resolution and already sent the new resolution, hopefully it will be on next meeting. The seventy-five percent is gonna stay exactly the way it is, nothing is gonna change.
Right.
We just wanna make sure that there is money in the budget for the option to exist.
That's what he said.
So that's a yes, there is money in the budget for both.
It was not, it was not budgeted for, it was not budgeted for. That is an omission that we made, that it's not budgeted for. But the difference, we would be able to adjust through an amendment once we get the resolution.
And where would, and where would you, where would you get the money?
So I think that we wouldn't, I don't think we know today, which is why, let's, Mr. Malazi, please chime in.
That's the reason why when we adopted the budget, we prepared the budget, we agreed with you, please, let's leave enough fund balance, let's leave enough contingency. Those unforeseen, unforeseen expenses, they come to play.
Right, but this was not, this was not unforeseen.
Right, but this one will be insignificant uh increase that will be there, so we can.
You said insignificant or insignificant?
Little, it will be little.
It will be little, okay, thank you.
Is there any possibility that any of this will come out the fund balance?
I believe we can find it without adjusting.
Good, that's good.
And that is, that is, that is our hope. And so it may come to where maybe we don't um hire for a position right away and we get some cost savings, but for that amount of money, we should be able to identify it through an amendment.
In the further discussion, hearing done, let's vote. That passes unanimously, congratulations. Thank you so much. And it's your first, it's your first.
Congratulations.
Thank you, excited.
Yes. Ms. Clark?
The next item is a discussion and consideration of requests for extended zoning moratorium presented by the city attorney under resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero fifty four.
Mayor and Council, this document is identical um for the most part to the previous moratorium that was established for districts two, four, and five. And this document, this moratorium would extend the uh moratorium for a period of ninety days from today's date until ninety days beyond. Unless within that period, you adopt, you redo the zoning code, the zoning resolution.
For the purpose of, of, of people with this thing, it is, what's the purpose of it?
The purpose of this moratorium?
The moratorium, extension of moratorium.
Well, the, 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 the moratorium is in place just to keep zoning in those districts as is, to essentially maintain the status, the status quo while the council is undergoing um review and revision to the zoning code. And it's my understanding that um, and my knowledge that in recent, recent weeks, the city council has been working diligently to assess the comprehensive plan, to look at the zoning code, to determine what type of uses are suitable, are suitable for the various districts and what this moratorium would do. The purpose would be to just keep, maintain the status quo until the council makes affirmative decisions as to what the comprehensive plan and zoning vision for the city would be.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Man, oh, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know, I'm on that promotion. I'm, I'm gonna let you keep that job.
I definitely give it to you, but look here, uh, yes, I will, Mr. Gilia. Uh, are we gonna be prepared within this ninety-eight period uh with the comprehensive plan?
So I believe, so I think we have, if I'm not mistaken, um, our team has met with each of the districts and done, and now it's time for the, or gotten some public feedback, at least given the time to be able to do it. I don't know what the responses from that have been or if uh council has gotten all of that. I know that y'all had a, a meeting in, I believe, District Five um before and there have been some other public meetings. So I'm not completely certain of what it is, but within ninety days, short answer is we're gonna figure it out. So if it hasn't been done, we will, and I don't think there's.
You are champion?
This is um, y'all.
I, I think the short answer though is we will have it done within the next ninety days if that is the ninety days that will be extended.
This is.
Yeah.
Um, can I ask a question? Um, from my understanding, the RFP is on the street for consulting, right? So what is that process? I know it went out on August thirty, right?
We should be awarding this week if we haven't already.
He closed on the twentieth, he's right.
On the twentieth of this month? Okay, and so then whatever pro, the human process that you all have a consultant, so how long will it take them to get on board and start working with council? And you, I'm pretty sure in the, in the process, I hope you are, so are they gonna be working with the community?
Oh, absolutely.
And so.
So just to kind of sum that up just briefly, um, the process should be a bit smoothly quickly. However, as long as the contractual part of it's over, it's pretty quickly. You can have it again probably before the end of the year necessarily. So at least ten days, thirty to forty days after the sign of the contract. Meaning as long as the contract moves smooth, we can move smoothly as well when the project started.
But in the meantime, anybody that comes in and requests for any zoning, they are, we are subject to the current law, right? Because, I mean, we have to have our um transition completed by November, so.
Right, so speaking with legal, we're planning to take Fulton County's code and adopt it as ours until our code have been adopted by the brand new code that come into the consulting. So yes, we're gonna move forward to take aggressive and a part of the requirements for November. We will have um to adopt the members' codes, meaning um to Fulton County's codes.
And so my question is gonna go at legal. Do you think I need to add District Three to the moratorium as well?
Is, is your discretion, um, particularly if you have concerns about what development may come into place before the council makes an affirmative decision as to what that mission is going to be? Um, it's just, it's, it's your discretion.
I think I wanna do that, um, because I wanna make sure I have been meeting with my community. Um, I know Clintonville, they, they are pretty uh astute, but there is another part of my district that's currently trying to organize and they definitely want to be deliberate on the development that's coming into the community. And so to ensure that um it's deliberate, I know um, you may not agree because we're gonna, we're gonna miss out on revenue. Um, but this is why we try to institute the moratorium the first ninety days because we had hoped we would have been further along in the process. Um, but we're not, and I don't wanna risk something coming into the community that our community don't want. So I am gonna ask, make a motion, I'm gonna move that we add District Three to the moratorium and I hope we can move this process along.
Stand second.
I'm third.
Properly moved to second, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Now we have Ms. Rawlins.
I'm sorry, I, I, I had a, a question.
I didn't see you.
Yeah, I know, well, it's okay. Um, can I ask my question now then?
Ms. Rawlins, next. Okay.
So just for clarity, if a applicant comes forth and it matches the current zoning that's approved, they still can't move forward, is that correct?
So, that's not true. So what happens is with the uh two, four, you're gonna begin two, three, four, and five now, am I correct? So two, three, four, and five, if they are right out zoned, then you move forward with, I think, if I'm not mistaken, you're only asked to have the zoning changes that go for the boards, am I correct in that? Cause I think what correction, you did, you're right, permitting as well, so yes, that's correct. So permitting does halt, so it's zoning and permitting.
So if someone comes in, we should one now.
One may move forward, but two, three, four, and five, yes, two, three, four, and five, that stops on zoning and permitting.
Okay.
But I, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Ms. Gomes?
So. So, um, my, my resident, um, and especially the economic development team that is for District Two is in complete um support of an additional ninety days. Uh, when we asked for the information, I do understand that it's only been five, um, I guess applicants that wanted to do, I guess.
Finish out the building.
Finish out. But I, I think it's important for us to be very deliberate in what we're doing um and definitely having development that is reflective of city of South Fulton and now Fulton County. So um, I hope that everyone understands that this is not something that we wanna rush to do. Um, and it's something that once we get through the process, I'm pretty sure it'll be something really beautiful. So um, I just continue to ask people to support us. I understand that we are business friendly, we want developers to come here, but we just need to make sure we have the right development.
And if I can add to that, Mayor, um, staff agrees with every thing she's saying. Um, we found a lot of discrepancies in that code that we're not happy with. So we're comfortable and on board the same place as you are, so thank you for that.
Good. Ms. Kalina?
Um. I wanna say, now that you're on board and you have these concerns, I wanna add District Six.
No, shut up.
No, really, I do. Um, I would like to add District Six, uh, but I have a question before, before I make that motion. Um, is it possible to not just adopt Fulton County wholesale? Uh, if we have tweaks to particular sections of the code, can we submit those? Could we maybe later have a work session or uh, could we put it on the agenda uh to have these tweaks if there are things that we're interested in tweaking before we adopt the wholesale?
I will defer to legal on that.
So the plan with your zoning code of is, I plan to, I have taken Fulton County's code and I plan to essentially dump it into South Fulton's code for your review over the first and second October meeting. And I don't anticipate that your review is going to end during those months. It's, it's very likely, it probably should go into November because it's such an exhaustive and large and complex document. Um, but the process will start over the next, over those four meetings for you to give us feedback. At the end of November, before transition, um, before November, the, the last date of November, before whatever meeting that is, whatever we have in place at that point will be the temporary fix. Is it gonna be beautiful? Likely not. Um, but is it going to be a Band-Aid? Yes. And is it gonna be, is it going to be sufficient? Yes. I think the goal, um, which is obvious by, by your procurement of a zoning specialist to coordinate with our staff, the goal is to make it into something that is beautiful um with respect to what Councilwoman Gomes just said. So you are on, on progress, we are on path to accomplish that. Uh, we will have a quick fix during transition and then something greater and better, hopefully within coming months with the assistance of um this collaborative team that we have sent to come in, in, in the near future.
With that, um, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to add District Six to the.
Second.
Properly moved to second, in discussion, all those in favor? Does that make it everybody seven one?
One and seven.
They got, they got the ends of the city. All right. Okay, Ms. Gilia, I'm sorry, Ms. Gilia, you been?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gilia? Um, well, Councilwoman Gomes, at least you know how many people have come to your district with projects. I don't have a clue.
She's asking about your award for, I'm sorry.
All I know is that, and, and this is my question, it's about projects that have been uh approved by Fulton County prior to us becoming a city. So, so that is a big deal. Cause I have a community where a house is for sale for one point two million and they've been told that uh approval from Fulton County is gonna end up with three hundred and ninety-nine homes being built not too far from them on the same street and they are limited. What street, what street, O'No Road? And so, and so, um, so that's like a real, real big issue. And not to have any data or being able, being, you know, able to get any data, the county's not gonna give any uh.
Well, that's not true.
We don't have any data.
So that's not true.
But that's what we were told in the budget.
We were, and since then, I took what you asked me to do and I told, I talked to Vic Anderson himself, we met at Fred's or wherever he is at eight in the morning and what I got from him was a commitment to get you that information. Ms. Reed has done some yeoman's work in pulling the preliminary information together that we have and I told her to wait until Mr. Anderson gives direction to his team to provide us with what we needed. And so that happened after the budget meeting, but based on your request and what you asked, I went to their leadership and they were quite amicable to it. So we will be able to get you what you need.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. All I wanna know, as an additional request, what is coming through for District Four? For, I'm making a call.
Well, so what we're doing, exact, so what we're doing is taking your request for District Four and we're going to turn it into a request for the city so that we don't have to keep going back part and parcel because I think for a variety of reasons, including just technology, we use one system, they use another, we haven't had as much ability and I can defer to Ms. Reed on that, but we can't pull all of the info. We're going to make a. We're going to make a request for all of this information at once. And again, they were quite amicable, Mr. Mr. Anderson told me to get back with him the next day. I just haven't had the time, but we will get it to you.
So, so, so let me be clear, please, I really have to, okay? So for those that were approved before we came to city, he's gonna give you that information for the entire city, correct?
That's what I, that, I considered that, yeah, ma'am.
Now, for those that are coming through that can't get approval because we've had a moratorium, we have a moratorium in place, there's still information on who they are, correct? So we got two different sets.
So that we can provide.
Right, we've already done that, right.
Yes, we can, and we're compiling that, so that's not an issue, we can get you that.
So how soon is it when we can get that?
Right, so, so far, what we've done is we've gathered the information from the current system that we have in permitting software, uh, we ran a report and we handed over to GIS. Because our permitting system does not include the permit, individual permits by, um, council district, we're had, we're having to manually do that by each permit we issue, because the system does not allow for us to include which districts. So our co-enforcement, excuse me, sorry, not co-enforcement, GIS, um, department, he's now taking that information and he's pulling that up on a map and then separating that into sales spreadsheet. So he's currently working on that.
So the permit is by street?
It's by street.
So, so, so we know the streets in the district?
Correct, but...
They do?
Right, but I, I would want you all to decipher and figure that part out. We prefer to put it in by district to make it simple, simple for you all.
And so when do you think we'll have that information?
Um, so I'm hoping to have it before the close of this week. I'm trying to, but if not, I would definitely communicate that to you all before the end of the week if it, if it's not possible.
Well, maybe easier, because we're here in a meeting and sometimes we commit to certain things. What I would prefer to do is if you give us until about noon tomorrow, um, either Ms. Reed, I will personally send a communication that just details our timeline, because we have just, uh, procured our own access to GIS and so wanna make sure we don't have any hiccups, no issues, and we get you all the information you're asking for. So we'll confirm the delivery, um, when the delivery is, et cetera, et cetera, about tomorrow at noon.
Okay, Mr. Baker? Yeah, I'm not a part of the moratorium, but I did want to let people who may be watching know about September twenty-eighth, uh, we haven't had enough of the development, facts, and that, uh... I can't hear you. But...
It's gotta be back to voice.
Okay, well, yeah, that's why I'm not a part of that. I just wanted to be known to the developers that, uh, we are open for business, even though we do have this, uh, moratorium going on, so that's why we have it.
Well, that's clearly...
That's good.
Well, I apologize, I was clearly gonna say we are open for business because we'll make sure we get the right, the right business.
Uh, exactly, and that's why we have this too, that's it.
Ms. Willis?
Yes, I wanna echo what everybody is saying. We are open for business, it's just that our code has not been updated since nineteen fifty. And so our residents have a, they want to be deliberate about what is coming into their community. Now that we are a city, um, we have fought for self-determination, so we want self-determination as far as the government and our community. No one wants warehouses in their backyard anymore.
Self-determination.
Okay.
Yes.
In further discussion? In further discussion, hearing done, um, initiate a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Discussion. And consideration. I guess it is, actually, I thought it says that. Can I get a motion?
To, yeah, as amended.
To adopt as amended.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we, uh, adopt the request for extending the zoning moratorium as amended to include...
With it, as amended. Property move to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, I'll again a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. No, 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 no. Okay.
Alright. Let's go home.
We all gotta vote.
Are you clear, Mr. Mr. Carter?
What, that we, we're making a motion to adjourn?
No, you, you were, it sounded like you wanted to say something earlier.
No, he, you all covered it.
Okay, okay. Alright. I think there's a council ready.